Who is a professor at Johns Hopkins. And in the 1950s, he did a research experiment involving placing rats in water and observing their swimming behavior. So in the first study, he wanted to see how long rats would attempt to keep themselves alive when faced with a seemingly hopeless situation. So he used wild and domesticated rats. He placed them in a jar of water and wanted to see how long they would swim. So some rats drowned just after two minutes. And some rats swam for nearly forty hours before they unfortunately drowned as well. So Richter wanted to see what would happen when he introduced the concept of hope to the rats. So he got a new, whole new set of rats, placed them in water in the jars and watched. And when they were just about to give up swimming, he would pluck them out, dry them off, and allow them time to recover. So later, he used those same rats, placed them back in a jar of water. And once they were, once they realized that they might be saved, that someone might pluck them out, they swam nonstop for sixty to eighty hours before they unfortunately drowned. And the reason for that was hope. So these rats had hope that someone would come and provide some, uh, some rescue to them. So believing that their situation was not hopeless, they swam for their lives. And I draw this comparison because sometimes a person who's experiencing a substance use disorder may feel hopeless about their situation. So what do we do in for that? Well, how do we, how do we provide hope to folks in our community who might be feeling hopeless about their situation? And we can do that through connection. We're going to talk about recovery community organizations. These communities are loving places where people feel nurtured, welcome, and valued. Recovery community, recovery community organizations are an instrument of hope. I want to highlight what we already have in Fairfield County, and then we can talk about recovery community organizations. So in Fairfield County, we have six nonprofit substance use disorder treatment providers that we contract with at the Adam H Board. Plus, we now have the Starlight Center, which has been a great asset to our community. We have countless, it seems to be countless for-profit treatment providers. We do not feel that we need more treatment in Fairfield County. We have NA, AA, we have twelve-step programs. We also offer the Connection App to people in recovery here in Fairfield County that gives them twenty-four-seven virtual access to peer support. We also have recovery housing or so over living for individuals in recovery. But we do have gaps in the continuum of care for substance use disorders in Fairfield County. So what are we missing and what are the barriers for folks who are needing access treatment in our community? And that's where we feel recovery community organizations can help fill some of these gaps in the continuum of care. The best comparison I can make for you all to kind of get a, uh, an idea of what an RCO is, is, you know, we have a center of hope here in, in Lancaster already. And this is an organization where peers who are experiencing serious mental illness can come for fellowship, socialization groups and things like that. A recovery community organization is very similar to that, but it's for people who are in recovery or pursuing recovery from substance use disorders. RCOs are nonprofits. They are led and governed by people in recovery. The peers in recovery are what really drives an RCO. They're supported by allies like Adam H Boards. Their mission and vision are very community-specific. And their focus is on supporting individuals in recovery from substance use disorder. It helps to fill gaps in treatment by offering non-cientical support services and advocacy and education. It also can help increase the prevalence and quality of long-term recovery for people experiencing substance, substance use disorders. I'm going to skip through this, but this is, this is just an idea of what the core principles and strategies of an RCO are, and I'll get into some of these throughout the presentation. Peer recovery support, again, peer recovery support is the, really the backbone of a recovery community organization and that authenticity of voice for peers in recovery. Peers are just really the, the critical component of the RCO. Some things that recovery community organizations can really help with is addressing those social determinants of health for people in recovery that can sometimes be barriers for folks who are pursuing treatment. Things like housing, employment, and even like socialization type things. Those are just some examples that the RCO can help address. RCOs employ peers and they develop peers. An RCO in our community would allow us to expand the peer services to more people in recovery, making that recovery more accessible for more of our population. Peer services are a complement to treatment. It is not treatment in itself. And peers may also serve as an alternative to individuals who declined treatment initially, leaving that possibility open for future treatment engagement. Peer support is evidence-based. And so people receiving peer support services may experience a number of different things, such as improved relationships with their treatment providers, increased treatment retention, greater housing stability, decreased criminal justice involvement. Again, sort of touching on those social determinants of health that I mentioned on that last slide. So we did find some studies that really highlight the benefits of peer recovery support services. I know this is probably, yeah, pretty good there. Some of the things that were founded, so there was a study, it was University of Texas in 2017. Over one thousand individuals participated in three-month, six, nine, and twelve-month checkup interviews. So these are people in recovery receiving peer recovery support services. As you can see, they had, at enrollment, there's a percentage up there. And then at twelve months, we can see improvements in every area up there, from housing, employment, wages, including, you know, healthcare costs going down and outpatient and patient costs being lowered as well. So there's definitely some evidence that supports the benefits of peer recovery support. Now, when it comes to recovery community impact on return to use, we've seen many studies that show that individuals will return to substance use forty to sixty percent of the time after exiting treatment. And then in the second year of sobriety, those relapse rates still hover around fifty percent. We did find a study that was done, about thirty-five hundred participants across twenty recovery community organizations, that there were only three hundred and twenty-three recurrences of substance use within those thirty-four, thirty-four hundred participants. And that is equivalent to a nine-point-three percent return to use. So significantly lower than someone who is just receiving treatment services.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So what, what time period, I was talking about fifty percent of return? What kind of timeframe is that?
That is within two years of exiting treatment. Yeah. This slide, I just want to highlight that our peers in recovery, it's really about a, um, we sort of have a network of peers here in Fairfield County. And people in recovery can become mentors, business owners, and community advocates. This is just a picture from last March. This was a peer recovery support class that we hosted. And all of these individuals gradually, hopefully, have gone to become certified peer recovery supporters. Not all of these folks were from Fairfield County. But add in addition to that, people who go on to become peer supporters report that they themselves, in providing services to the community, experienced less depression, improved self-esteem, improved quality of life. So as I mentioned, we host peer recovery support training about twice a year. And typically, we have twenty to twenty-five individuals who go through these classes. And I had developed this career pathway some time ago that really shows how people in recovery, how, when they become a certified peer recovery supporter, that it doesn't stop there for them. They can go on and become a case manager. They may decide to go to college and pursue credentials that allow them to become counselors, managers, and site supervisors. It's really important to just kind of highlight that, you know, individuals in recovery sometimes have difficult criminal justice backgrounds and often face stigma, maybe because of problematic education records or maybe don't have a great employment record or history. So showing that, that there is a career pathway is really important to help them see, you know, what they can accomplish. Recovery is more than treatment. I think I've already kind of stated that. There is not just one pathway to recovery. So treatment isn't for everybody. And sometimes having that recovery community is really what helps drive them to seeking that sobriety. Recovery community organizations provide a range of services that address those psychosocial needs. I already touched on that a little bit too. And they are able to serve and support those members who may not align with that more traditional philosophy of recovery. So over the last year, we have done some visits to different recovery community organizations in Ohio. And this is just some pictures that we have of the Hope Recovery Community in Medina, Ohio. And you can see Dylan up in the, heading the donkey. They have a farm, they have a home, and they have recovery housing. And so just kind of give you an idea of what that, what that might look like is, so they have a home, very home-like environments. And upstairs, there's a living room, there's a dining room, kitchen, all of the things that a home comes equipped with. But downstairs, they have space for offices and a meeting room, a place for events to take place. You can see they have a game room. So this would be a place where folks in recovery can come and cook a meal or share, you know, in watching a movie or just a place for people to come and feel supported in their recovery and have that socialization. But they can also, you know, do their laundry or attend a meeting.
Non-residential?
Non-residential. It's just like a drop-in center-type place. So the other aspect I wanted to point out is the farm. And so as you can see in that top right-hand picture, that is a recovery house that is located right on the farm. And so the men who are in recovery that live in the home actually work on the farm. So it's a great concept. Dylan and I were very impressed with what we had seen at Hope Recovery Community. And there are other RCOs in Ohio. This is just an example of some of them. There's, I think, twenty in Ohio. We do have a visitor with us today. We have Kale Burke online, who is the founder of the Recovery Community in Southeast, the Southeast Ohio Hope Center in Nelsonville. Kale is a partner of ours. We've done many projects with. And I just want to, I wanted to throw it to Kale if he has anything that he'd like to add now.
Okay. Thank you so much. My name's Kale Burke. I am a person in long-term recovery, which means that I have not had a drink since July 3rd of 2009. I'm a senior project manager for the Buonivite School at Ohio University. And I work in, can you hear me okay? Miranda, am I coming through all right?
Yeah. We can hear you good, Kale.
All right. And I work on two teams. I work with the OFR, the ODS Fatality Review Board down in Cincinnati and Hamilton County. And I also work with the Recovery Friendly Workforce Initiative. And you all are part of that consortium. Currently, I'm a PhD candidate with my area of expertise in the recovery support services. So I kind of know what I'm talking about here, not to brag, but I just wanted to kind of give some background on this. I think what Miranda is doing is amazing. I think she's a rock star, just my own personal. Big kudos to Miranda. I don't know exactly how much more I can add to this other than the Southeast Ohio Hope Center is the first RCO in Appalachia, Ohio. And when I got down there for my, I am originally from the Hilltop in Columbus. I'm a group home kid, fourteen to seventeen. I lived in a group home. And recovery has changed my life. I would not be sitting here talking to you all if I was not in long-term recovery. And as far as the peer, peer supporters go, the concept and the way I try to explain that is we, as a community, invest heavily in treatment, like, and we, between the nonprofits and the boards and investing in that. And this is a protection of that investment because it really does extend out that continuum of care and getting people past that critical point of the first eighteen to twenty-four months of the recovery. I don't have the stats in front of me, but the literature is saying, and it's showing more and more, once you get somebody past that eighteen to twenty-four month, then they're, they, the probabilities of them staying in recovery long-term go up exponentially. So are there any questions that I can answer? Or I don't, Miranda, what do you, what would you like for me to cover?
How about you just stand by till the end?
Stand by? I was also in the Navy, so when somebody stands by, I feel like standing at attention.
Thank you, Kale. We appreciate you. So I know I'm going, I'm running a little long on time here, so I'll try to keep the next few slides brief for you. But just wanted to make a note that recovery community organizations really help to break down stigma. You know, it, it really means a lot to, to the recovery community to be able to share their experience. But it also goes a long way in the community because we tend to, it tends to be more powerful when we're hearing a message that comes from someone that's in recovery. And I'll do a little shameless plug. We do have our overdose awareness day event on Thursday. All right. So public education, awareness, harm reduction are also activities that a recovery community organization would be able to do. And these are just examples of some of the events that the Hope Recovery Community in Medina has done. So a lot of stuff with youth, a lot of things with kids, and very family-oriented. And then they also do some fundraising. And so I just wanted to share their Ride for Recovery event that they've done that helped to provide some funding for their program. Again, more examples of events, lots of things that the recovery community organization can do. I think I've already touched a little bit about the social contributions that a, or the economic and social contributions that a recovery community organization can bring to our community. And I'll just share a little bit more about those pictures. So the Medina Hope Recovery Community has a garden. And that allows the men on the, on the farm to work in the garden, but then they get back to the community by doing free produce. They also do beekeeping, which we thought was really cool, and they sell their hope honey. This is just an example of something that we also would love to see the recovery community organization do in our community. We have brought this concept to one of our coalition meetings about a year ago. And we did a focus group with nine people who identify as being a person in recovery. We talked about, you know, we, we have events in our community. They're very alcohol-centered. You know, we have our Brew Fest, we have the Art Walk, we have our Dora, which is fantastic. But we do have members of our community who are in recovery that don't come to those events because they don't feel like they're in a safe sober place for them to go. So the Yellow Balloon Project is just a concept where the recovery community would, would set up at those events. The yellow balloon symbolizes a safe place for people in recovery to come and socialize. Kale mentioned recovery-friendly workplace, and I want to touch on this because this is something that we have been working on for over a year. In fact, before the governor started his initiative in August last year, our Fairfield County Adam H was already working on this concept. Recovery-friendly workplace is something we'd love to see our recovery community organization take on because, again, that peer-to-peer is really important. Recovery-friendly workplace is basically just, you know, aiming to combat stigma in the workplace and support businesses in fostering recovery-friendly environments. And the picture there is of Smurfette West Rock. They became our first RFW in Fairfield County. So if you're not familiar with them, they're a corrugated box manufacturer. We've had a longstanding relationship with them where we are helping them to hire people in recovery. So it was great that they became our first official RFW in Fairfield County. I want to just throw out there, Recovery Ohio, which is an organization how the governor's office came to our events. They identified, they invited Smurfette West Rock to come be recognized pre-game of the Cincinnati Reds game on August 31st. They actually asked me to go to, to represent Smurfette West Rock in Fairfield County. So if anyone is interested, come see me at the Reds game on August 31st as we get recognized for our great work in recovery-friendly workplace. I don't get to do the first hit. I get to stand there awkwardly while they talk about me. But no, we're very proud of this. And we do feel like recovery-friendly workplace is something that would really go a lot further if it was done by peers in recovery than just your local Adam H Board. Social enterprise, I know I talked about the farm for Hope Recovery, but we really feel like we would need a social enterprise model, not only for sustainability, but just to, you know, for that meaningful and employment aspect of the recovery community. You know, Marcy and Dylan had attended a training, and this highlights one of the, and social enterprises that they had heard about. So as you can see, the Hope on Wheels Transportation gave twenty-four jobs to people in recovery, but it's also helping the community by providing transportation as well as an auto clinic where they're, they're fixing vehicles. Again, I'm going to go fast just for the sake of time. Sustainability for something like this, it's going to be really important that we diversify funding streams. We know that opioid settlement dollars are one-time funding. So how would we be able to sustain after we receive that money? Again, that social enterprise model is going to be key. Peer support services are billable to Medicaid. I know Hope Recovery Community employs nineteen peer supporters. We would love to have nineteen or twenty peer supporters providing services in our community. Again, that would be billable to Medicaid. Some other RCOs receive funding from private foundations or from people in recovery, fundraising efforts, a small amount of money could be made by paid memberships. There is federal and state funding for things like this. And of course, we would also contribute as much as we can as we have money to do so. But how do we get started? It has to come from the recovery community. It can't start from your, your Adam H Board. We need to identify a real champion in recovery who has that certain skill set to be able to, you know, kind of get the project started, run a business. We can, of course, facilitate and assist, but we really need to find that champion in recovery first. We've talked about different ways that we can do that. We already have a great network of peer supporters in our community. So we have a few ideas of people that might be able to accomplish this. And then really what I think we would need is finding a site, that home-type environment that we can turn into that recovery communal, community organization. And maybe with some social enterprise considerations with that. I don't know if we can find a farm, but maybe that's, you know, something that we explore. We also talked about, you know, our RCO could sort of come out of one of our treatment providers, but it would be really important for that recovery community organization once it starts to branch off of the treatment provider just because they're more credible and effective as a standalone entity and not connected to a treatment provider. We would want to develop a steering committee for this, and consulting is available. So we've already reached out to a few different consultants who would be willing to help with this project. And my last slide, I just wanted to say, you know, an investment in recovery is an investment in community. And highlighting a couple of different pictures of things that they've done with the Adam H Board, except for the top left, that's my cute little dog on the up. Thank you. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you, first of all, for all of the input so far. What is your ask of us today?
I will, I will look at Marcy.
Because I, I asked them to come and to present and to pull this information together.
Give us, give us an idea of what you're working.
And to share options that are available. So Jeff Porter and I, along with the Adam H, had had conversations about the opioid funding has reached a level now for us to be considering an investment. And what would that investment be best utilized? And what are the gaps? What's needed in our community? What's something that we could breathe life to that has sustainability after these one-time funds go away? And this is what we, as a group, have kind of solidified on, that this is a need, there's a gap, and there's a way for this to continue after we kind of give life to it. Thanks, Bonnie.
Commissioner Davis?
Yeah, I have some questions. Not just your idea, but more generally. Talking about a million dollars right now, is that right?
It continues to grow.
Yeah, it's, just to say it's a million. And what are the, what are timing requirements in terms of after we receive those funds, we're required to expend them with some period of time or what?
No. No, there's restrictions on the use of funds, and this would be one that would be allowable. Or we've had no reporting yet because we've had no expensive ones. So once we have started spending funds, then we have reporting requirements. But there's no deadline you must use by.
So in other words, in this concept, in theory, there could be seed money. And then over a horizon, a dwindling level of operational support?
There's different ways to come at it, sure.
Right. I'm just saying, the structure that, that I would want to see, and again, I'm, I'm supportive of the idea. Shit, I'm going to have to endorse it. It, it just, the sustainability of the future operation is why I'm thinking along the lines of seed, trailing operational support on the theory that if it's a million dollars when you start, you start spending some, it won't be a million dollars in the next year and the year after that. So anyway, I just, I just think if the idea can be, you know, structured, something like that, you know, I, I think it'd be huge. And I'm supportive of it. So that's all.
Commissioner Lewis, see?
So first of all, I, you know, your information about the study about rats, pretty interesting. And also, and also, you know, it would never pass the feet of test today. I know. But, and then the fifty percent are green. And that's two years is considered a success if we look at it long-term, like five years, you know?
Probably. I just don't have that information. I just want to add to, you know, Marcy and I sometimes talk about, we have often had board members tell us that, you know, they have family members in recovery who go to treatment. And they come out of treatment, and that, and there's really nothing here for them to get involved and to help maintain. And so we really do think that this would be a great way to help.
The reason I mention that, I've heard little comments.
Okay.
So if that is the case, I think that's, the other kind of thing, when we talk about substance abuse, we tend to put everything in one fox. When you're talking about meth, heroin, crack, and everything else, which is the most difficult, the drugs to treat?
So I would say there are no real evidence-based treatments for methamphetamines other than contingency management, which is basically rewards for sobriety. In Fairfield County, we have a higher prevalence of alcohol use disorders than any other substance use disorder.
Could be of interest to just explore all that because they're not the same.
Yeah. And that's the thing about the recovery community organization. It doesn't matter what substance a person is in recovery from. Everyone comes together. No one's turned away. It also doesn't matter what, where they are in their recovery. So some folks might still have, be in, in active use, but they are welcome to come to that recovery community organization and to, you know, help facilitate that sobriety.
But I, Commissioner Davis, I'm very supportive of this.
Yeah.
I think the nine percent pursuitism rate is a stark number that is heard of to me. So, you know, really supportive of the thought process that you're pursuing. So, you know, really supportive of the thought process that you're pursuing and really impressed by the work that you've done. And we'll continue to advocate for some type of prevention work, right? Is the idea of keeping people away from this to start with, so we don't have to go down this road with them, but fully supportive of what you've done.
Thank you.
I would just add, I think we see the recovery community as playing a role in that as well. With their awareness campaigns and events, there's a piece of it. Maybe it's not technically called prevention, but it serves the same purpose, getting out the community and doing a lot of awareness work to try to keep people going down this path to begin with.
And that doesn't just say that.
Yes, of course. Yep. So it's probably too soon, but I'm wondering if in your operation, you're observing any of the adverse consequences for legalization of marijuana that we were warned about?
Yes, um, I don't know specifically what those would be. Tony Ashton, our prevention coordinator, would be much, uh, much better to be able to provide that information, but yes.
We do not know we're busy the rest of this year, so next year. Maybe next year we can hear about whether the advertised and adverse consequences of legalization are being experienced or whether they were just being warned about.
Yeah, we, we do, we believe there is, we just don't know what there, what that looks like exactly yet.
Thank you.
While the new law is still prohibit underage persons from using marijuana, I think that's probably the biggest risk we all need to be aware of. There is actual research now that shows a definite association, probably causation, for young people of marijuana use and the development of a psychotic disorder. So years and years now, people have felt that there was a connection for young people developing things like schizophrenia. Now there are some research studies that show there definitely is an association. So as you can imagine, people under 21, whose brains are still developing, it makes sense, right? That it would impact them more than adults. So I think that's probably where most of our concern is, would be, even though it's still not legal, the access is greater because it's legal for adults, that more kids are going to use it.
Thank you all very much for all your work and thanks for being here today.
And thanks to Kale for joining. I appreciate that.
Yeah, you were successful in making random blush.
Well, thank you for the opportunity, and I didn't mean to speak about myself. But one last thing I want to say is that the recovery community organization is more of a clubhouse model. It's not really a drop-in center, a drop-in center. When it's a clubhouse model, there's agency among the people that are participating and it's self-policing, right? So I just wanted to really put that out there. It's not a drop-in model, it's more of a clubhouse model where the participants own, have ownership in it, and they're good neighbors. They mow grass and they shovel snow for their neighbors. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it very much.
Thanks for being here today, Kale. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Right, moving quickly to the National Center for State Courts presentation.
They are joining us virtually.
Right, so online, we're hopeful that we've got Mari Maldonado, Nathan Hall, and Michael Naven.
Good morning.
There we go. I, I can unmute. Thank you. We'll be brief here. My name's Nathan Hall. I'm a principal consultant and I'm joined with two of my colleagues, Mike Naven and Mari Maldonado. We just wanted to take a few minutes of your time and, and thank you for sharing time on your busy agenda. But we're convening, and just started a court space needs assessment for the court system in Fairfield County. And we're with the National Center for State Courts. The National Center for State Courts is a not-for-profit organization focusing on the improvement of the administration of justice nationally and internationally. So I've been with the center for 17 years, but for much longer than that, the National Center's developed standards regarding courthouse design, planning, and security. We have a lot of experience in Ohio, and in fact, we've done probably well over 300 different assessments over my time, the career working at the center in, in all areas. And so we're going to try to be brief, and I'm going to kick it off to Mari, and she has some slides to go through what we're up to and, you know, and there'll be hopefully some opportunities along the way during this project where we'll be able to interact with the commissioners. Certainly, we're interacting with the entire justice system and with the facilities planning. And we're actually going to be on-site doing tours and interviews in a couple of weeks, September 9th and 10th. So I will, last thing I'll say before I turn it to Mari is that, you know, we're welcome to meet with you individually. You know, if you want to come see us at the Hall of Justice or around and abouts while we're in town. So with that, I'll kick it right off with, over to Mari. Thanks.
Thank you, Nathan. Good morning, commissioners and staff. Thank you for this opportunity. I'll share my screen now. Now if you all can see something. Can you see my presentation? Okay, perfect. So again, good morning. Thank you for this opportunity. In the agenda today, we just want to briefly walk you through the project background, the scope, you know, what, what is it that we're going to be doing, the project timeline, and then tell you a little bit about the analysis and the assessment that we're going to be doing, and then show you some examples of the space program and blocking, and then talk a little bit about the next steps. So with the project background, it is sort of understanding that the existing facility was built in the late 60s and 70s, and it's currently facing some spacing challenges in order to meet the, the community needs and the services that it provides to the community, which has created a need for the court to basically have to lease extra facilities to be able to operate.
I, I want to ask a question on the background. There's a bullet point there that says there's an urgent need for new or renovated courthouse. I thought you were assessing that need, and it looks like you're starting with it.
Yeah, let me, let me clarify. I, you know, we, that's probably, we don't mean to put the cart before the horse here at all. You know, our, our understanding was that getting to hiring the National Center, some stakeholders had expressed a concern with the existing space. So we're certainly going to verify that. So sorry, I don't mean to, you know, we don't mean to put that out there as it's predetermined. We'll make that assessment ourselves, but that was one of the justifications, I believe, where, you know, there was a, a need for a professional third-party objective space assessment. But we'll certainly, you know, that's well put and we'll make sure, we'll use our own eyes.
Yeah, I, I think I could speak for the commissioner's office when I say we don't know if there's a need and we're supportive of your folks' involvement to determine if there is a need. Just real, real sensitive to a preordained conclusion here.
Absolutely.
There's good. Thank you. Thank you, Nathan, for that clarification. Just moving forward, as part of the project scope, we're going to be looking at data. We're going to be analyzing data, case filing information, population, and then looking at the different services and, and information from the facilities and operators to be able to better understand what are some of the needs. And then from that, we're going to be developing a space program that will define, you know, the future facility needs based on that information. As part of that, we're also going to be creating or developing some visual concepts that will help illustrate, you know, what those future layouts and circulation, security, and things like that could look like. Here is the project timeline and the seven tasks that are associated with the project. Excuse me. We're anticipating completion of this in 24 weeks. We already started with the project kickoff. We started analyzing data, case filing, and population forecasting. And as Nathan mentioned, sorry, we are going to be visiting the facilities in September. We're going to be interviewing staff. As of recently, we received survey questionnaires back from staff, letting us know the different services provided, staffing information. So we're going to be looking at all that information and making our own assessments and evaluations while we're there. And then we're going to be developing projections and taking all that information into consideration to develop, like I mentioned, a future court space plan with the different concepts. And then develop a final written report that will be provided to the team for review. And, and that will conclude the project. I'll turn it over quickly to Mike, if he can walk us through a little bit on the assessment and the different information that it's going to be assessed and how that's going to be used.
Thanks, Mari. So one of the, you know, the aspect is, is of looking at potentially, what are the needs of space? To determine what is, what are the trends of population and also case filings? Looking forward to, you know, over the next, say, 25 years. And Fairfield is, is unique in Ohio in that it, they have a projected increase in population over the next 25 years. It's one of maybe a handful, half a dozen counties that have been projected to have that, have that increase. So that fits into, we have to take that into consideration as to, you know, what is the effect of that going to have on case filings? Because we've noticed there's tended to be a trend that the more population you have, the more population growth then also results in a growth in, in case filings. Can you move to the next slide, Mari? So what we're, what we.
Sure.
Does someone have a question?
No, go right ahead.
Okay, so what we've done so far is we've taken the as-is kind of data. What is the historical population? What is projected population? And right now, we've just looked at gathering the data on case filings, broken down by case types, to then be able to analyze that and then come up with some projections based on various projecting methods to determine how, what is, what is the projected population going to look like over the next 25 years or so? That could then be used and, and looked at and reviewed for how that will affect the needs of, of space within your existing, with, within your existing courthouses and whether that meets the needs or not. So that's really rather quickly where we're, where, where we currently are at with, with, with our analysis on that data. Any questions on that? And again, we'll be looking at, you know, you know, we've gathered the historical population, historical new case filings then, and then we'll develop those future growth scenarios based on that data. Any questions, Commissioner?
No.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
So moving along, so the information that we're going to be assessing includes, or it could be categorized or summarized into these four sections, which is adjudication, administration, public access, and sustainability. So we want to be able to understand, we're going to take a look at how the courtrooms are used, how people move through the facilities, what type of technology. Talk to the administration, how they operate, what kind of services, if they have flexible scheduling, e-filing, what are kind of the processes established, and then those that are envisioned to be established in the future. And then from a public access component, kind of seeing how wayfinding, navigation, what are people experiencing in the courthouse, and some of the things that will need to be implemented, thinking about the future as well. And then when it comes to sustainability, it's looking at the building, how, if it has trauma-informed design provided either for staff or visitors, the different types of security, emergency preparedness, and things like that. And then on this. Sorry, sure.
Yeah, just a footnote, I mean, we haven't had a chance to meet, so, you know, it's hard to kind of sometimes tell what audience you're, you're coming into. But just to give you an example, in our collective history, several years ago, we built a brand-new jail, real big one. We're operating three jail systems at one time, and a bunch of consultants told us that if we consolidated into one jail system, we would have operational efficiencies, and it could be operated with many fewer people than three jails could be operated. Now, some years later, after the opening of the jail, we found out that that's not how it really works, and we have a lot more people working at one jail than we had working at three, and I understand all that. And I only mention it from the standpoint that operational efficiency of any future plan should be huge and accurate, and we have some history where it's not accurate. So we're a little goosey about, you know, a huge expenditure with promises of operational efficiencies that don't actually turn out to engender any savings in operation. Just mentioning that.
Yeah, and just a, that's absolutely well taken, and we'll provide what some of the trends and best practices are in, in regards to operational efficiencies, and there's no sure thing that one size fits all. So, you know, you're a unique court system, but we will bring to bear thoughts about, you know, flexible utilization of space that makes it a little more resilient to change over time, as an example. The use of technology to provide service to the public, and, and that's an efficiency potentially gained for in-person services versus services that can be provided remotely. But we're not going to, you know, just unilaterally make those decisions, but we're going to present those ideas to all the different departments in the court system and also to, to the county to see if they make sense with the, how, how courts actually work and what your experience is. And so your experience with the jail system, you know, I think is, is very, very, you know, will be, will want to learn more about that, why, and if there's any parallels to the court system at all.
Thank you for that. So as I mentioned earlier in the presentation, I wanted to show you some examples of what the court space program will look like. And right here, we have an example for one that we did for Virginia, just to give you a little bit of context. So it's going to be a written document that will have requirements for like different components of the courthouse, you know, like sizing and things like that. And then also, it's going to be coupled with some examples or concept plans or layouts showing how those things could be kind of laid out and for adjacencies and efficiencies. So just to give you an idea, this is what it will look like. And then the other component is the blocking and stacking. So the blocking diagrams will show kind of like those major functions, such as courtrooms, chambers, and public areas, and how are they arranged in relation to one another. And then the stacking diagrams, it's more to illustrate how the areas are going to be vertically distributed across the different floors. So we'll provide examples such as these to take into consideration for future development.
And again, we're not designing the courthouse, but we're showing some trends and best practices about how modern courthouses to ensure safe circulation. One of the common issues with courthouses that we've experienced nationally is that they're not always secure and that the connection and contact, physical contacts between, say, judges and in custody persons or witnesses and parties to a case or jurors in, in custody. You know, courthouses are sort of unique animals. There's a lot of contentious things that happen in courthouses, and so the arrangement of the courthouse will be very important. So these are just to show a very high-level description of, of some of those zones of circulations where you have different ways into the courtrooms and they're not the same path of travel. And this is important for, at least for modern courthouse design and the what-if, if you did need new facilities, what some of the best practices are for that. Go ahead, Mari.
Thank you. And I'm off to my last slide. So some of the next steps, as we mentioned, we are continuing to review and analyze that case filing data, population, and the survey questionnaires that we receive back from the different staff. We're going to be conducting our facility tours and kind of meeting with staff and administration and having time to sit down with them and understand better, you know, the, the current use of the facilities and what the ambition for the future. We're going to be there on the 9th and the 10th. And we anticipate following up with the interviewers as needed, just to kind of clarify certain information and as we prepare. and as we prepare and develop those preliminary projections, and then we're going to be developing a preliminary space program that will be shared with the, with the team for their review and input. And that's it, at least from, from the presentation side. I don't know if there are any comments or questions. We try to be brief because we understand that it's a full agenda, and we greatly appreciate the time to do this and introduce ourselves to you.
Thank you all for the presentation. Commissioner Davis, do you have questions or comments?
There are further questions.
Commissioner Davis, please.
I don't. I do look forward to see what the outcome of your study looks like.
So starting a little bit here, it feels like this cake is partially already baked. You start off saying there's an urgent need, and we've not done any of the data yet, and then you're talking about designing a new courthouse that we haven't even determined if we need. It feels like you're already pretty far down the path, and that's not something I'm really comfortable with. I'm sure we can talk through that, you know, in future days, but it just, I'm struggling a little bit with the credibility of what you guys are doing.
Absolutely.
Sorry, it's John. Oh, it's online. I think a lot of the scope piece that we probably shouldn't let off with highlights that, that blocking and stacking is essentially a design to build new, but a order of operation for efficiency that we could adapt in our current location just as easy. So my goal is to hopefully see over a long term how to organize better, to make it more efficient, more customer service friendly, and address the things that we can. If that goes on further, I don't know. I don't know the current needs. But I'm going to use the tool as a way to plan for tweaks within the building to make it more efficient or customer service friendly and safer, which obviously is my eye point here. So, yeah, I mean, I think the typical situation for these folks get involved is when people have reached a point where there is deficiencies, but we're not there. I think we're looking for just improvements.
You'll be there when they have a onsite visit.
Yes, sir. And I've been along with everyone, the questionnaires, the interviews, yeah.
Thank you all very much for being here today. We appreciate your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, Shannon Carter. Very excited to see Shannon, always. Shannon, thank you for being here today with the OSU Extension update.
Thank you, yes. So my update today will be really focused on our SNAP education program. A few weeks ago, a budget director sent emails to all the departments in the county asking how any recent federal funding changes have affected our programs. And in response to that, Anna reached out and asked me to come speak with you today. And so really, it's just an update of our status. There's not necessarily an ask today. But on July 3rd, when the US Senate signed into the bill that the SNAP education program would no longer be federally funded, what that meant is they're not eliminating the program, but they're not supplying any funding for it. SNAP Ed is a national education program that has over 300 implementing agencies across the United States. In Ohio, it is, those funds, they come from the USDA farm bill. They are funneled through Ohio Job and Family Services, and they, the JFS contracts with Ohio State University Extension to implement that program in Ohio. So that's what it looks like in Ohio, and we have over 130 SNAP education program assistance in most counties in Ohio. Here in Fairfield County, we have two three-quarter time program assistance. And the SNAP Ed program, I don't have a total dollar figure, but that has been the longest-running, most stable grant that OSU Extension has partnered with since 1994. So it's a bit of a shock that this program is no longer funded. So what that program, the purpose of it, is for obesity prevention, and they specifically target audiences that benefit from SNAP food assistance benefits. And their goal is obesity prevention. We're trying to help teach those families how to stretch their food stamps and also eat healthier. And our program assistants, especially in this county, I'm partial to, they did amazing work. In 2024, they reached over 10,000 people in all the classes they did just in one year. And those involved children in schools that have 50% of grade participation in free and reduced lunch program. They also went to senior centers, limited income folks, and then worked with our Job and Family Services participants as well. And so they reached over 10,000 people, youth and adults, directly with their education programs, but they also had a reach of over 59,000 contacts through their other educational material and outreach through health fairs, farm markets, and other educational information that they were handing out. And that was in 2024. Our 2025 numbers are still coming in, but those are even higher. So my first attempt in learning that this program would no longer be funded was to reach out to state OSU Extension Administration. They provide every area leader with what they call backfill dollars, so that while I am serving as an administrator for half of my time, they supply enough funds for hiring a half-time person to keep that program going in my area of family consumer sciences. And while I have not specifically hired a person in the last six years that I've been in this role, I have used those funds to contract with individuals to teach classes. So still getting the education out there, but a little bit probably more efficient way of doing that for me in the last six years. Starting in January, I also now administer over a second area in Extension, so I now have seven counties, which means I have two areas of backfill dollars. So that was my great, grand idea was to reach out and ask, can I put both of those backfill dollar packages together to create a position to hire? It would be posted, and our current SNAP Ed program assistance would be welcome to apply. And the area leader model will be changing with OSU Extension. We don't have a specific timeline, but with that, they are, the state is reluctant to commit any of those dollars to new positions, which I understand. So that request is denied. So I'm literally back at the drawing board. While I'll be seeking other funding from community resources, looking for some other grants, and really just kind of maybe collaborating with some other social service agencies. Because I'm sure our office will continue to get calls, and, you know, when this program goes away and these two folks are essentially losing their jobs, we're going to, we're going to feel that, or we're going to get those requests. So I will be actively seeking funding. But I want to thank the Commission for your great support of OSU Extension and our regular programming. And understandably, the Commission cannot be expected to support all of these federal funding changes that are now affecting us at the county level. But I just wanted to provide you with that update so that you understand some changes in our staffing at the county level. Any questions?
Yes.
Most importantly, thank you. We don't know we don't know what cuts are coming from the state or federal government at this point. There are some legislation that's already passed and some that's been threatened, which is fine. But oftentimes, what happens when these state leaders, federal leaders decide that it's time to get right, make cuts, where they do that is they cut money to local governments, but they leave the mandates and obligations in place. And so, you know, they get reelected because they're big cutters. You get grabbed on because you've got these mandates that are no longer funded. So your approach to this situation is what the Commissioner's Office dream of. And I would like to find a way to express my appreciation to your organization in the coming months for how you're handling this. Thank you.
Commissioner Davis, please.
So in a sense, it's kind of surprising because RFK is advocating healthy eating, and this is by its main for that, and yet it's going away, so it's quite surprising.
Agreed.
So I just wanted to go a lot of the things Commissioner Davis said. Your approach is tremendously appreciated, letting us know that through taking a financial hit, what that financial hit means to your organization and how you're going to try to figure it out. We don't know how many people are going to be coming into our budget cycle saying, well, I had this grant, and now it's gone, and now I need you to fill that gap, and we don't have the financial resources to do that. So you're ahead of it, and your approach is deeply appreciated, and we're hopeful that others will follow your example.
Thank you. If there is a silver lining here, it is that the grant itself had a carryover, and JFS just last Thursday released that carryover for OSU Extension to extend as long as possible the current and remaining program assistants who have been rightfully so, looking for other jobs and jumping ship, so to speak. And so that essentially will be extending the program. We thought it would be ending September 30th, and they're saying approximately two more months. So it gives us a little bit more time to seek funding and try to retain our people.
We can be hopeful outside of funding you ourselves. If we can be hopeful in supporting you and your efforts, we have tremendous respect for you and your organization. Welcome the opportunity to be helpful.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here, Commissioner. Okay, we are now on to public comments. If there's anyone that would like to address the Commission, please approach a podium, state your name and address, and please let me hear your comments in three minutes as we're way behind schedule. All right.
Good morning. I live in Brentwood, 188. I was thinking about some things that were said this morning here in this room. They use the word hope. Hope without faith will not work. But it is important. It's an important word. But faith in our Creator and in His Son, Jesus Christ. When asked what the two greatest thoughts we should have in our mind each day is to love the Lord your God with all your heart, soul, and mind, and the second one is to love your neighbor as yourself. If people truly would follow the love letter that the Lord gave us, the Bible, the first Word, we would be able to solve a lot of these problems. And right now, I've been doing a lot of reading about AI. And there's a lot of people are concerned about the results of AI. What's it going to do to us, and how it's going to use, and who's going to control it? That's what we need to be concerned about, too. So with these thoughts in mind, Lord, we come before you this morning, thanking you and praising you for the words that we received, the ideas that have been expressed, and how we need to look to you for the answer, because you created each of us. You know the hairs on our heads that we have hair. And that's important, too, because only God can count the hairs on my head. I can't. So we need to look to you for that guidance and direction. And we know that we fall short in our daily walk. We make mistakes. We are human, but that doesn't excuse us from coming back to you and asking for more help. So with that thought in mind, I pray that the people in this room will not forget our Creator. We pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Ray. Does anyone else would like to address the Commission this morning? I would thank you all for coming. Stephen, do you have a legal update? All right, Bonnie?
Yep. Okay, so just coming to be, you have some variations of note for our meeting schedule. Today, the employee recognition event is at 11:30. August 26th, the Commission meeting is at 3:00 PM that day due to a CCAO meeting occurring that morning. September 4th, Commission meeting is at 9:00 AM with no meeting on the regular day of September the 2nd. And the week of September 8th, there is no meeting scheduled. Review packet does contain a list of administrative approvals, and there are 16 resolutions on the agenda for the regular voting meeting. A few resolutions of note, there is a resolution on to adjust the meeting times for the October 28th review and regular meeting, as well as the budget hearings. We're flip-flopping that day. The regular meeting will begin at 1:00 PM, and the budget hearings will begin at 9:00 AM that day. There's a resolution to authorize the repayment of an advance. This is reimbursing the general fund for $250,000 from the State Energy Grant Fund. That was for the lighting project there. John, you want to add anything to that?
Well, just that, you know, we're happy to see those great funds coming down, and the lighting project, the job of family, in our controls.
Thank you. You're up again. Air Court Authority Board approved a land lease agreement at their meeting on August 11th for an annual payment of $191,500. Five-year lease that would commence January 2026 with an automatic renewal for five subsequent five-year terms. We did chat about this at our previous meeting and have that on for your consideration today. John? There's a resolution to accept the amounts and rates determined by the Budget Commission for the necessary tax levies and authorizes certifying them to the county auditor. The Health Department has a resolution to authorize the submission of the 2026 CFLP litter law enforcement and solid waste enforcement grant application to CFLP. And Regional Planning has a resolution to establish a drainage maintenance district for the Sycamore Grove subdivision and Violet Township. Bart, any finance update?
Just to remind everybody that the Level 3 budget entry access ends for General Department next Tuesday, which is the 27th. We have been communicating, and everybody's loaded except for some different departments, so it's okay to work that with those departments at the time.
All right. Thank you, Bart. Rochelle, calendar review and invitations received, please.
Calendar review and correspondence are on the agenda. The Commissioners received two invitations. Pink's Berry Senior Living has their grand opening on August 27th at 11:00 AM, located at 1572 Timber Top Street in Lancaster. And the Lancaster Fairfield Community Action Agency has their annual dinner on September 18th at Alley Park. That is it.
Thank you, Rochelle. That's all, Commissioner.
All right, thank you. Elected officials here with us today. Tiffany, do you have anything you want to add today?
Obviously, although we have our family resource guide for being out here soon, it's just a guide with all of the same as you can do in Fairfield County with families and children, and we'll be getting those out to agents.
Thank you.
We finished up details yesterday with Sheriff's Office, Van Winchester Medical Center, and BioTownship for the DEA Take Back Day. That day is going to be Saturday, November 25th, at 10:00 to 2:00, at those two locations. One will be at the Dilect Medical Center, the other one's going to be at the BioTownship Service Center. At the BioTownship Service Center, we will be doing electronic scanning at that event as well.
All right, Ollie? All right, Dr. Brown?
We are continuing our informal hearings, and I know that you have summaries of those. I've given that to you individually as well as a group. I will add to that two things. The first thing I will add is that we are overwhelmingly receiving a great deal of positive feedback to continue those hearings. People do appreciate them and are happy that they're being held. And the second thing relates to the resolution that you are going to certify back to the county auditor, the millage that is approved through the Budget Commission. One thing to point out is that just from the county perspective, let's just look at a county perspective alone, there's 12.7 mills. The only portion that would increase in terms of evaluation increasing is the 20% to 2.6 mills that is considered in-site millage. So I mention that because sometimes when people hear that, you know, 80% of that millage, as I look at the county perspective versus 20%, that this doesn't adjust. The larger portion is not increasing, the smaller portion does increase. That gives a sense of realization about how it's not a dollar-for-dollar exchange when it comes to the comparison evaluation to taxes. of valuation to taxation. So I offer that as a specific example, as you look at a specific subset. Now, on your property tax bill, you see everything by taxing district. What we're trying to do on the property cards or what you see online is actually show that by levy so that people can see even more information. Um, I think we're going to be able to do that relatively quickly. So you can see it as an individual basis as opposed to the aggregate basis that you're approving today because it's more, um, relevant for people when they see it on an individual basis. So right now you can see the information in terms of taxing district, but maybe you'd like to see it in a little more detail. And as long as we can do that without having to be, um, manually adjusting that every time that we receive information from the state, I think we're going to be able to do that. So stay tuned on that. I add that. It's a technical aspect. It's a little bit harder to put into summary. It's not necessarily a theme we're hearing, but as we answer questions, I do think we pull that into how it really brings home the fact that your, your tax bill does not increase on dollar-for-dollar basis just when your valuation increases. The other thing I will add though is this, when your valuation increases because you've built onto your home, you've added, you know, two stories of a mother-in-law suite, for example, you know, that is always going to be an increase. So the one thing that does impact an increase in taxation is going to be improvements to your home. And there have been some conversations where people get a little bit, um, down the wrong path as they think about that as something that they've done. And there's been quite a lot of that in the county. You've seen the new construction numbers. You know, that is something that does increase because it's the new valuation for it. So I just add that, two technical aspects to, um, complement the summaries that I've been providing to you all. On the One Big Beautiful Bill Act, the one thing, uh, that you have in your review folder is a summary of the One Big Beautiful Bill in terms of what it means for payroll. And payroll's working, um, diligently to make sure that employees will have all the information that they need to be able to accept that advantage if they have overtime. And we do know that there will be, you know, departments that have, you know, overtime for this individual basis that want to accept these advantages through the One Big Beautiful Bill Act. And so we are working on that. You have a summary in your review folder of that as well. When you see the word to the wise and the kinds of things that we place in global communications, I just want to, um, highlight the context of those things. In some other counties, the state auditor is actually asking, what are you doing to communicate about these important things relating to, uh, vendor control, internal control? And we highlight that we have the Wednesday word, the wise. We highlight communications we do here. We highlight those communications. And that is something that is very satisfying to an auditor as they look at those sorts of things. And some other counties are looking at how we communicate in that regard, um, to be helpful in terms of those internal control aspects. And then finally, I'd just like to mention two bits of good news because good news is always wonderful to share. Um, in September, I will receive the Government Finance Officers Association Award for Achievement in Government Excellence and in October, the Ohio University Partner of the Year. And that will be presented in September and October, respectively, in Columbus and Athens.
Congratulations.
Yep.
Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Thank you for listening to these details.
Can I ask a question to the auditor?
Please.
And I'm not sure if this is a question for you or Bart or who would be best able to answer this at some point in the future. Uh, time won't permit an answer today, I don't suspect, but in terms of the general fund expenditures, I mean, in a way of speaking, they might fall into three different categories. Um, federally mandated to be done, state mandated to be done, and discretionary. Is there a fourth category I should be thinking about?
There may be local mandates.
And so then the question I'm getting at, again, not for an answer today, but I wonder if it would be constructional to look at every budgetary category in the general fund budget with a color code as to whether it comes as a result of a federal, state, local mandate, or if it's one hundred percent discretionary. That'd be a useful tool.
That sort of conversation has happened in the past. What is mandated, what is non-mandated in terms of what we will do as priorities in our budget. That is something that the budget hearings and the, um, budget retreats used to really focus on. What is mandated, what is not mandated? And I think at times that's helpful because it gives a lens, but at other times there may be local priorities that are very high priorities that may not line up specifically with a codified mandate.
I get it. I just think that with the state, federal governments brandishing their, their, their scissors, we, we could find ourselves in an environment at some point where those questions become. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you, Elton President. Tony, back? Good? Okay?
I was excited. Thursday night is our, uh, parent, uh, interest, our, interest meetings, uh, partnership this year. So, like school districts participating in our programming. So I think it's that again, and.
So yesterday Kenny McDonald announced his, uh, retirement from Columbus and, um, just wanted to state for the record how deeply appreciative I am for the leadership that he's provided central Ohio area for the past fifteen, twenty years, um, the amazing transformation that's taken place in central Ohio, um, in some part due to his leadership and, uh, the way he's brought people together. Um, and I know he's, you know, texting and said he's planning to stay around and, and, uh, still consult with Columbus Partnership and, and listen. I hope that that's the case for many years to come. Uh, because he is, uh, uh, really just uniquely qualified and, and, uh, record of success that can't be parallel. So just wanted to put that out there that, um, we appreciate.
He's made a huge impact and really focused on regionalism, uh, especially the last five years. Tried to say it's more than just to see Columbus as a region. Did a really good job of bringing in, uh, favorite counties as part of it. Uh, and we'll say that Jason Oliver, the director, the president of, uh, Columbus Partnership recognizes that. He's talking about regionalism frequently. I think it's a bunch of children. Um, Kenny moving this, but one of the things about a great leader is what they leave behind. Not lazy left behind, a lot of economic development projects, but pretty good team. Uh, I think we're going to look at some really good slide in. I feel good about looking at stuff.
Thank you. I appreciate this.
Well, we did have our S B A, uh, onsite Thursday at, you know, as expected, as we visited each major patient that had damage, uh, did leave there knowing met the minimum permits for S B A, twenty-five patients or businesses and individuals. So we're hopeful to see some information coming very soon from S B A about that.
And you feel comfortable that we're communicating effectively with those who were impacted?
We are trying to communicate the programmatic things without making announcements before our federal partners or our state partners. Uh, but we are experiencing some confusion out there because while I have patients, uh, and not everything is, uh, it's clear, I think, it's, like, without the federal piece going out and being announced, I really can't say much. We're in a little bit of a lull.
Mr. President, if I might?
Yes.
So there, there's some commentary on social media that we're on the cusp of FEMA approval that falls also.
Definitely falls, uh, uh, you know, FEMA's new requirements for public and individual assistance. Uh, for example, from the state of Ohio, it's somewhere north of twenty-four million uninsured falls. Uh, when it's an impacted single county, it's very, very, very unusual to have a FEMA declaration. Usually in multi-county units. But programs that are there, S B A, um, and trigger other programs in the future if they're unmet needs after S B A. Uh, so that's, that's the federal government's, um, the disaster response first line for individuals is the, is the Small Business Administration, and those are disaster loans, um, that, that an individual business can take out. Okay. Then you know, work and hopefully put out more solid information. Hopefully people get our information from us and from the state of Ohio directly to kind of weed through some of those.
Well said. Well danced. Corey?
No.
That is, uh, this site, that enough. All right. Uh, old business, Commissioner Davis.
Yeah. Um, so Thursday at one-thirty is the, uh, Power Siding Board hearing as it relates to the Eastern Cotton Tail, uh, solar project. I have the commission's desk fee on that for, for Thursday at one-thirty. And, uh, looking forward to that being over.
You all did. Thank you. Thank you for your service on that. Commissioner Levesey, old business.
The last week I had the opportunity to, uh, meet with Coach and Paul Larson, film video. Uh, and I, I thought what was really good about that, we, we were able to talk about, uh, their new, uh, their office at, uh, the Fairfield Center. And he is so appreciative and as well as his staff of that location, being, uh, agents with the sheriff's, uh, substations. Well, uh, they love the location. They love just everything about it. They also mentioned John Coaches and they kind of have an issue. He's long. So, thank you, John.
I have no business, nor do I have new business. New business, Commissioner Levesey.
Thank you.
New business, Commissioner Davis.
Good thinking.
All right. Uh, we will go to our voting pattern. If you all would rise, if you're able, join us in pledge allegiance. Thank you all very much. Rochelle, are there announcements?
There are no additional announcements.
For a motion to the approval of the minutes of the August twelfth meeting? Second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Minutes passed three zero from the Commissioner's Resolution twenty-two-five-dash-eight-dot-nineteen-dot-A. A resolution amending Resolutions twenty-two-four-twelve-three-A, twenty-twenty-five-four-twenty-two-A, twenty-twenty-five-six-twenty-four-A, twenty-twenty-five-seven-twenty-nine-A, and twenty-twenty-five-eight-five-A, establishing the Fairfield County Board of Commissioners twenty-twenty-five review session and regular meeting dates and special meeting dates.
Under Commissioners, I mean Resolutions A, B, C, and.
Second. Discussion. Hearing done. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. From the Fairfield County Board of Developmental Disabilities, Resolution twenty-two-five-dash-eight-dot-nineteen-dot-E. A resolution to approve a reimbursement for share of cost for Ethernet services paid to A T and T as a memo expenditure for fund twenty-sixth of Fairfield County Board of Developmental Disabilities.
Under Fairfield County Board of Developmental Disabilities, I move Resolution D and A.
Second. Discussion. Hearing done. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. For Fairfield County Economic and Workforce Development, Resolution twenty-two-five-dash-eighteen-dot-nineteen-dot-G. A resolution to approve additional appropriations by appropriating from unappropriated into a major expense object category seventy-eight-sixty-five port authority and authorizing a fund-to-fund transfer.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Hearing done. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. From Fairfield County Emergency Management Agency, Resolution twenty-two-five-dash-eight-dot-nineteen-dot-H. A resolution to approve a memo expenditure from E M A Fund Local Emergency Planning Committee twenty-ninety-one to E M A Fund twenty-ninety for agreed services.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Hearing done. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. From Fairfield County Engineer, Resolution twenty-two-five-dash-eight-dot-nineteen-dot-I. A resolution to appropriate from unappropriated in a major expenditure object category, County Engineer twenty-twenty-four motor vehicle for contractual services.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Hearing done. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. Fairfield County Health Department, Resolution twenty-two-five-dash-eighteen-dot-nineteen-dot-eight-dash-eight-dot-nineteen-j. A resolution approving the submission of the fiscal year twenty-twenty-six C F L P litter law enforcement and solid waste enforcement grant applications to C F L P.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Hearing done. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. For Fairfield County Job and Family Services, Resolution twenty-two-five-dash-eight-dot-nineteen-dot-K. A resolution to appropriate from unappropriated in a major expenditure object category for Fairfield County J F S Fund twenty-eighteen Public Assistance Fund.
For Fairfield County Job and Family Services, I move Resolution K L and M.
Second. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. For Fairfield County Regional Planning Commission, Resolution twenty-two-five-dash-eight-dot-nineteen-dot-N. A resolution to establish a drainage maintenance district for Sycamore Grove subdivision.
Uh, discussion. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. From the Fairfield County Sheriff, Resolution twenty-two-five-dash-eight-dot-nineteen-dot-O. A resolution authorizing disposal of vehicle for the Fairfield County Sheriff's Office.
So moved. Second. Discussion. Hearing done. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. Payment of bills, Resolution twenty-two-five-dash-eight-dot-nineteen-dot-P. Resolution authorizing approval and payment of invoices for departments that need Board of Commissioners approval.
So moved. Second. Discussion. Hearing done. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. The next regular meeting is scheduled for August twenty-sixth at three P.
Any other business before the commission this morning? Appreciate you all being here. I'd love the promotion. All of us, the favorite, please signify with saying aye. Aye, very enjoyed. Thank you all very much.